We have the clock is not correct.
I know. Okay. All right. Is that ready?
Yeah.
Hi, good morning everybody. Thanks for coming to today's workshop and getting with our first meeting.
The United States of America, interior public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every injustice for all.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is not called orders. The Department of Labor, Superhigh School, and State Hospital of Government in compliance with the Public Peas Act. I wish you advice to act and notice this right now. The meeting was sent to the Ezra Park Press, Federal newspaper, on January 8th, 2024. The agency's daytime location of this meeting will provide a notice. This meeting goes to the public. Councilor Mr. Bieber?
Here.
Mala?
Here.
Gordon?
Here.
Kilo? Lomini? Lexine?
Here.
All right, first up, remarks from the audience. Is anybody online or in person who would like to be heard? Just please state your name and your address and our orders. No one? Okay, so we'll be here. All right, so first up, first item from special, we can't command Fuso or tax assessor to take the floor here. I know last year we had a lot of assessors that were hired to expect a lot of C-Briders and they've done their research with the county, so that should come in.
Good morning.
We just kind of want to hear what happened.
Yeah, that's easy. Basically, in a nutshell, each year we have to do annual reassessments where we change the assessments to reflect current market value. There used to be a ratio that you had to apply to assessment to market value to determine if your assessment was fair enough. They took the ratio out and it's simple. If your assessment is what you can sell your house for, the assessment is valid. If you think the assessment is high, you can sell your house for three for appeal, vice versa, if it's low. Each year when we do our annual reassessment, the county tax board publishes a requirement that each assessor has to sign. It's basically a procedure list on what you have to do and what you have to review in performing your annual reassessment. The number one markers on that is that your ratio, if you compare the assessment to the sales price, has to be 95% to 105% for a two-year average. Which, when I did my reassessment for C-Bright, I hit, you know, I think I came in around 97%, saying that the assessments were 3% lower than the sales price for a two-year period onto it. When it actually came time to get my book certified, the county tax board rejected my book in C-Bright. They said, "Well, you have an additional requirement that's not necessarily listed in our procedures." And that is if your directive ratio, you have to raise your net valuation taxable equal to the amount of your directive ratio. What a directive ratio is, every time a sale occurs, they take the assessment divided by the sales price and come up with a ratio. So like for all the sales that occurred, they come up with an average for like what the whole borough was running at. My ratio was 81%, or 82%. So the county said, "Even though my revaluation, I'm hitting a two-year average of 95%, I haven't raised the net valuation taxable," which is all the assessments added up in the borough by 18%. And so they made me go back and raise everybody's assessment, so my net valuation taxable was 18% higher in 2024 than it was in 2023.
So Tim, is that the summary?
That's the summary of what happened.
Anything else you want to cover?
To be perfectly honest, I thought there was going to be a much bigger backlash. You know, like when the postcards came out, when we first started doing the assessment, annual reassessment program, I would come into my office and I would have like 30 voicemails, 30 emails to like, "What's going on?" I barely had any comment from them. Right now, at the county appeal level, I have 25, which is an extremely low level of appeals. I thought I was going to be 90.
So thanks for coming in, appreciate this. One of our part meetings, we had a lot of residents that came in and were pretty upset. So we got to hear. And obviously, the problem that's driving this is the sale price of the properties, which we don't have control over. We understand that if the sale price goes up and the assessment goes up, from a municipal budget perspective, we can lower the budget to try to equalize things out.
But then...
You don't lower the budget.
I'm sorry, not the rate, the tax rate.
I'm sorry, meant the tax rate. We can lower the tax rate to try to equalize things out within a reasonable range of two and a half hours, I have a loss for age. My first question is around, when this assessment goes up, we don't control the county taxes, we don't control the school tax assessments that affect us. So while we can offset some of this through the tax rate, what's happening at the county and the school tax level that we have no recourse to dealing with? If they were all dropping because everybody was going up in the rate we are, then it'd equalize out, but I doubt that that's the case.
No, different towns are going up at different rates when it comes to that.
Most likely lower, which means we pay increased burden portionally because of a lot higher assessed values. Is that...
Correct.
Okay, from a recourse perspective, it sounds like you tried to do the right thing to protect the residents in the town, but you got slapped on the wrist for it. And you tried, and in the end, they basically told you this is what it's going to be. So as far as recourse perspective, there's not that much that we can do. Not... Well, I mean, we could do, we could do, we could try to appeal it.
May I add, just jumping on with that point, how many other towns do you assess?
Right now, I just do C-Bright and Mammoth Beach. I used to do Avon, but I gave up Avon last minute.
Was Mammoth Beach your first assessment? Was that rejected as well?
No, Mammoth Beach was accepted. But there was two different stories, because my ratio in Mammoth Beach was 95%. My ratio in C-Bright was 82%. So by just doing the 95% ratio, I covered that on Mammoth Beach. But since C-Bright's ratio was so small, they said that this rule's been around for a long time where they've been applying it. Why they ever wrote in the procedures that I signed, I have no idea. But, you know, they said this is the first time that it's happened to me. Other towns have had the same thing.
Other towns have rejected it?
Well, after I was rejected, you start calling out.
How many were rejected?
I know Eden County, Kingsburg. You know, that's basically, I just called like the closer friends. I didn't send out a group email to all the assessors in my own county.
That would be an interesting question to make.
So Tim, you could probably just go for that with the county.
Yeah, just a comment and then a question, and then I'll be done. From the affordability perspective, for the people in our town, this is how, especially the families, the second homes and people in a position to do it, that's one thing. But for the families that live here, that they really have no recourse other than to appeal, spend thousands of dollars in an appeal, why can't they reject it? It's a terrible situation. And it's not good for the town in general, I think we would all agree with that. Not to get too local and too personal, but I look at my own situation. Obviously, I didn't sell my house, so they can't determine my sale price versus my assessed value. But the last three properties that sold on my block, comparables, none of them went up as much as my taxes went up this year. The price increases on those, if I took the average of all those, and it's amazing what the last couple of years you've nailed it. It's always been the last three sales averaging across, and that's when my tax rate was. This year, that wasn't the case. The last three sales then add up 20% on top of it. So the benefit of this, in my particular case, and unfortunately, I don't have a family raising me now, my taxes have gone 49% in the last few years. I say that's out of control. And is it strictly driven by the fact that people will pay more for the properties?
Oh, yeah.
And that's what drives it? But can you explain to me if your last three assessments, in my case, were substantially lower than my assessment? Is that strictly driven by the town, the county saying you have to do this?
Well, for this year, it was. On prior years, even though C-Bright, you don't think there's different neighborhoods in C-Bright, there are different neighborhoods in C-Bright for assessing purposes. One neighborhood is piled like our best neighborhood that I call River to Ocean, because the house is that, on the beach on Ocean Avenue, go from Ocean Avenue to the river. They're all grouped together. So when I do my reassessment, I'll pull it up to say, "How many sales occurred in the last year or two within that neighborhood?" And if they sold at 95%, the assessment was 95% of the sales price, I'll move that neighborhood up 5%. Another one would be just here in the central business district, all the residential dwelling units, on Bee, Surf, New Street, you know, I'll group all those sales together as a neighborhood and say, "What did they sell for?" And I'll lay a few or two as a percentage of their assessment, and then I bump that neighborhood up, whatever that percentage would be for. So within your case, I don't know if you're on the fringe of two neighborhoods, the way I have classified out, that when you're thinking houses on my street are in the same neighborhood, they may not necessarily be the way I classified them before. Or it just could be that there are other sales that also was in that VCS that justified the increase in the most recent sales. Like this year, I have one sale that they're going to do the directive ratio off. It came in at 91%. You know, so depending upon how many more sales we get and what that ratio is going to be off of my new 2024 assessment, it's going to dictate how much I raise the whole town next year.
Do you think we have more trouble coming?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't see the market stopping in this town. You know, I kept on saying that as they raised interest price, the market's going to slow down. It just hasn't, you know.
Yeah, my unofficial, six years ago, I figured the market was going to cool off.
Yeah, I've been saying for the last four or five years, like, oh, any day now, any day now.
So the best price is still the same when we had it. I never surprised them in any complaint, basically, unfortunately, any recourse is still just appealing. And it won't cost money most likely, but I don't know what else to advise.
At the county level, it's where the book could be changed, like $75 to $150 based upon what your assessment is for. And it's one of the things that the property owners can do themselves. The problem is, I think you deal with a kangaroo court, because they're the ones that are approving my books, they're the ones that told me I had to raise my assessment to accept my book, and now they're going to be the ones hearing the appeals.
Yeah, so they got to basically judge it's all work. Tim, you do have some leeway and settlement going to be on the phone, don't you?
I do.
And does county or rule pay settlement, or...
No. Every once in a while, I've heard that they've done it, they've never done it to me. And basically, on each settlement, needs my signature, the taxpayer's signature, and the borough attorney's signature.
Right.
And as long as all three signatures are on it, the county normally will accept the appeal.
Now, Tim, can I just ask a question? We're still into the assessment demonstration program in Mammoth County, different than most other counties in the state. And we're supposed to revow 20% of the town each year.
No.
It's not?
No. You revow, you change the assessments on 100% of the properties. You do physical inspections on 20% of the property. So it's a five-year rolling cycle. We currently have a contract with R E S to do the 20% inspection. So they'll knock on 20% of the doors each year to try to get interior inspections and exterior inspections, just to make sure that my basic information that I'm using for the reassessment is up to date and it's not stale information for it. You know, so each property gets inspected once every five years on a 20% rolling cycle. But every year, all the assessments change to market value.
How much 20% change?
It's all off the initial year they did for it. I can't tell you on C-Bright exactly how they did it, but I know Mammoth Beach, it started with Block 1, Lot 1, took the first 20% and just, you know, went with it.
What it's worth, we had that process, it worked extremely well.
You still have that process.
They were very proficient in the way they did it. It's all online, you walk around the house.
You can do a virtual fantastic interior inspection.
I was impressed.
When you say there's a group right above, if one house sells for Astronomical, does that impact immediately that group?
See, good question. Normally, I would say no, because if I had three sales or four sales, to make the sample size a little larger, and three of the four sales were relatively tight, and then you had one outlier that was way high, I would say that's an outlier, and I wouldn't necessarily utilize that when I did my reassessment. Now, though, if that one outlier that's extremely high falls and enforces me to raise my net valuation taxable for the whole town up, because I got it, like, I have one sale, 91%. So if I don't get another sale for the remainder of the year, the sampling period ends July 30th. If I don't get another sale by July 30th, June 30th, check me, I'm wrong, and I'm sorry, on June 30th, then I'm going to have to raise through that valuation taxable the borough by 9% just based on that one sale.
The Riverfront, and then you'll apartments, you're going to kill downtown assessments.
Absolutely. Downtown assessments, I can't believe that people are planning for the prices they're paying for those properties, you know.
Yeah, that extra neighborhood was shocking, but it was flooding a few weeks ago.
Oh, no.
We make mistakes.
Very easy, eight, nine hundred thousand. And I remember those things were like 75, you know, it's like, you gotta be kidding.
Then, obviously, we have to manage our own budget. But is there anything that you can advise us on that we can do in any way help this situation? There's no lever, from what you've described, I don't see a lever that you can pull.
I don't, I really don't think, because like, I was told, if I continue not to submit an acceptable book to them last year, they're basically would pull it out of my hands, hire somebody to do the reassessment, and then back charge the borough for whatever that cost was.
And likely wouldn't get any better in that scenario.
Right. The only other thing that would be an option would be to opt out, which they did give municipalities a certain opportunity to opt out of the demonstration program, which a few municipalities did. Avon did, Marlboro did, Freehold Township did like a hybrid for it, Madison Square did. I wouldn't necessarily advise that you opt out, though, because that's going to have certain repercussions, and there are always going to be putting pressure on you doing a full revaluation, which is more expensive than just your contract for the 20% inspection each year.
Another question I have is, as I've watched the proportion between the improved property and the land itself, the land seems to be getting much bigger faster.
Because that's what you change.
I mean, in some respects, somebody could look at that a little bit of an eye and say, "Is that being unintentional?" Because if we have enough sanding, most of the values on the land, if the house is destroyed, you got to pay the compulsory taxes.
It's not done intentionally. Certain properties, it is.
But it's not unique to C-Bright.
It's not unique to C-Bright, because that's basically what you change. When you do the improvement value, I have to use my cost model that's approved by the Division of Taxation. Each year, they publish what's called a cost conversion factor, which takes that cost modeling, which was developed in the 80s, and makes the construction price up to 2024 prices for it. So the way you do it is you price out the house based on physically on the land, and then you come up with a number of what the house should be selling for, and then the remainder is the land value. So when I go through my reassessment, I'll look at every property that's sold, go on the multiple listings, Zulu, Realtor.com, make sure that my base information is correct, that if I don't have it having a finished basement, that they're not showing finished basement on it. If I have it as having two and a half bedroom or bathroom, they don't have three full bathrooms in it. Once I correct all that, change the age and depreciation for it, hit it with the new cost factor, all the rest of the change is land value to get that up to market value, and then everybody else in that neighborhood's land value moves up the same percentage.
I see.
So if I look at Trulia, I give a number, it should be relatively comparable to my assessment.
Your total number, yes. Not necessarily if you look at, because a lot of people would say, "Oh, I just want to feel my land value, and I want to feel my improved value." But you can't do that. I could be all wrong on how I get to the final number, but if the final number is the correct final number, that's all that matters to me in the debt.
Your largest comparative value is not like Trulia or Zulu, it's looking at the recent comps.
Yeah, recently.
That's prior to when you got...
Yeah, you can't, like even Zulu, like there's estimates that they put out about a year and a half ago, they put out a notice saying that there's estimates, the market's so crazy that their algorithms that they run is not reliable, and they're like, "Don't count on ours' estimates of being accurate."
Okay, but how much difference can you imagine that's on the commercial? How great this park is.
Yeah, dude, it's...
Raising...
The residential is raising a lot more than the commercial.
Right.
There's no doubt about it.
Right. How much do you follow them up?
It's typical. See, that's what I would expect.
Of course, have you noticed with Jack, Ezra?
Yes.
Just had a question, Tim. If we were to have a major, something similar to Sandy, that event, you have the ability to, in short term, adjust assessments on that, or is that something that's been years?
Depends on when it occurs, you know. When you look at Sandy, Sandy actually, from a tax assessing perspective, on to adjust the assessments for that following year, occurred at a good time. The assessment date is October 1st of each year. Then there's a physical depreciation clause within the law that says that if the property suffers physical deterioration, after the October 1st assessment date and prior to April 1st, the assessor can make a correction of errors and change the assessment. When Sandy came through on October 29th, it was after the books were recorded in the assessing date of October 1st, but since it was before April 1st, we had the opportunity to adjust all the assessments for, was in 23?
2012.
2012, yeah, for 2013.
12.
No, it happened in 2012.
Yes.
So then we changed the assessments to January 13th.
Okay.
Excellent.
And as people rebuild each year?
How do they put them back in the books? You know, unfortunately, if we happen to see any effect, it's not going to be as devastating as it was prior, just because so much of this town has been reconstructed and elevated, you know, that, I think the commercial businesses are all going to get destroyed equally the same amount.
Yeah, you're going to see all the sand, all the snow is going down, streets covered and debris, all that stuff, but hopefully, most of the homes won't get crushed.
Right. You'll just see whatever garage and devastation will lower levels of town.
Tim, as you know, the Riverfront project is starting, right? So it's underway right now, the animals project, it's going to be 44, but I guess it'll be highly expensive on this. Will that be classified as its own space, it will affect our people in the downtown area, because the houses are very different, the property is very different? Will that be treated as its own?
Oh, yeah, that's going to be its own neighborhood, on its own. It's just kind of like East Condo Development, you know, Grand Hand is a neighborhood, Land's End's a neighborhood, Fountain, Yon Harbor, they're all, to me, as assessing blocks, a neighborhood.
That's unfortunate, assessing.
Yeah, there was some concern during discussions that it would maybe affect tax rate for the people in downtown areas, which was insurance.
Now, you know, there are also going to be sets of two and five.
Right. Thanks.
Anybody else have anything for Tim?
Just one question, Beach Club, we've gone over it in the past, just very few examples of Beach Club properties outside of C-Bright, is that considering that Sandy?
Yeah, yeah, we, we had settlements, there were whole periods on the assessments for the settlement, those are slowly rolling off onto it. The first group that we did, Shipper Hoy, Sands, let's see, Beach Club are now out of that freeze period. Driftwood and Edgewater should be coming out.
Thanks, Ryan.
Hi, it was a pleasure. You're still great. Yes, thank you very much for asking.
Thank you.
I'll let them know you were asking about. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ryan. Thanks for the interview. All right, thanks to Ryan, Mark, thanks to everybody.
Absolutely, morning, everybody.
Morning, Ryan.
Those who do not know, Ryan Murphy, O E M. Just a quick update from O E M about the major report, other than the emergency operation plan is due to the county and then up to the state, will require a resolution from the council once that is complete. Working on the final annexes to get those done now. The document is about this deep, about 1,200 pages, so I don't have a copy for everybody today, but I will send over a copy of the basic plan electronically for a whole review, which basically has everything listed in there, including all the annexes. The annexes include, you know, essentially how many fire trucks we have, to what to do in a nuclear emergency, so it's pretty depth, so it's not really necessary to discuss here, but... Other than that, Mr. Kilo, did you make a call last night? Jack, I apologize for not coming back to you. Just on getting everybody quarterly updates, the county does quarterly meetings, next one's March 5th. If you all like, I can either do that person here, and do it virtually, and do it via email with bullet points and what's discussed, whatever you all prefer, I'm open for it, so.
Ryan, I think, I think what premises is council talking about our emergency management plan, what happens if there's another Sandy, and what are our roles in that when Sandy hits? What is the role of the elected officials, the appointed officials, myself included?
Yeah, so, I mean, during Sandy, really, the role for O E M is essentially act as coordination cell between all local, federal, state agencies, whoever's really involved in even if it involves Sandy. You know, mainly, it would be on, you know, actually working with the different departments you have in town, through the fire, police, public works, you know, public utilities, and working with you all online. Really, essentially, public information, I guess, would be the key part, is working with the town to alleviate any concerns that they may have, essentially bring them up to the coordination cell, and get the right information out to the right people and what to do with, you know, getting their, you know, working with FEMA to get everything back on track, with FEMA, also the other agencies and such. But everything will come through with what's called the E O C Mercy Operations Center, which will be manned by O E M.
Ryan, I have a question. A couple people through this council, obviously, who've through the Sandy situation. And have heard of the memory that took place in these kinds of things. I come from a world where you drill a little bit.
Yeah.
In practice. Having said that, I'm not the man you're requesting, and other than the fact, where do I go look to understand the roles and responsibilities these charges have? Because I'd like to be able to say, "I don't have to go to my first meeting to understand my first responsibility."
Understood, yeah, that would be in the basic plan, I can get that to you.
It's in there?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah, I'll make sure that that's in there. But I think, any questions, once you have it, you got a chance to take a look at it, just let me know.
No, it's always good, once you hear a fresh release, it's the right idea to do for everybody.
Yeah, and, you know, I haven't heard from county that we're doing any kind of major, you know, tabletop, if you will, exercise, drill, but I can bring it up in March and see if there's anything going on and let you know, and feel free to participate in that.
Yeah, just from a practical standpoint, I think the one we went through the last time, I mean, basically, it's the first couple of days where really assessing what's going on, just working on communication, but really, especially being a government body, we don't really have any specific skill set that applies, and we're all taking walks.
I understand.
We all ended on our feet eventually, but really, it was emergency management, you know, every, you know, police, fire, whatever, doing their job, assessing what was going on, they just had to speak with the utilities, trying to figure it out, and communicating with the residents and business owners. But that's what it happened to really, and ultimately, a big thing has backed up sort of this decision-making process. We made a lot of meetings, and we make, that's where the communication, I would say, and decision-making, really is what the government body does most of, but basically, you know, you can make some pretty important decisions.
Hey, Ryan, two quick questions. One, is there anything coming down from a regulation perspective, from the county and the state, that you're particularly concerned about? And the second question is, do we have any vulnerabilities that you think we should be aware of to address?
Oh, that's true. No, right now, the only real regulations that state's coming down with, the emergency operation plan, don't have to be ratified by the council every two years instead of four. But like, once we get that done, it's really just updating it with any kind of changes they make in the regulations, so it's not a huge change. And that's kind of it, yeah.
Are your vulnerabilities, we all know, sits right there.
Yeah.
Or the other side. But as far as, as well being prepared as we can, you're comfortable if there's no additional taxes we should pay?
No, not, I mean, the last time we got it, we had it as...
Yeah, and, you know, I haven't, I haven't heard from county that we're doing any kind of major, you know, tabletop, if you will, exercise, drill, but I can bring it up in March and see if there's anything going on and let you know, and feel free to participate in that.
Yeah, just from a practical standpoint, I have the one, we went through the last time, basically, it's the first couple days were really assessing what's going on, just working on communication, but really, especially being a government body, we don't really have any specific skill set that applies, we were all taking walks.
Understood.
We all ended on our feet eventually, but really, it was emergency management, you know, every, you know, police, fire, whatever, doing their job, assessing what was going on, they just had to speak with the utilities, trying to figure it out, communicating with the residents and business owners, but that's what it happened to really, and ultimately, a big thing has backed up sort of this, this decision-making process, we made a lot of meetings and we make, that's where the communication, I would say, decision-making, really is what the government body does most of, basically, you know, you can make some pretty important decisions.
Hey, Ryan, two quick questions. One, is there anything coming down from a regulation perspective, from the county to the state, that you're particularly concerned about? And the second question is, do we have any vulnerabilities that you think we should be aware of to address?
Oh, that's true. No, right now, the only real regulations that states coming down with the emergency operation plan don't have to be ratified by the council every two years instead of four, but like, once we get that done, it's really just updating it with any kind of changes they make in the regulations, so it's not a huge change, and that's kind of it, yeah.
Are your vulnerabilities, we all know, sits right there.
Yeah.
Or the other side, but as far as, as well being prepared as we can, you're comfortable if there's no additional steps we should pay?
No, um, not, I mean, last time we got it, we had an addition plan that was done by an outside firm, excuse me, can't remember the name of the one, off the top of my head, they kind of identified any issues there, I can include that also with the basic plan, if you'd like to take a look at it, it was done after Sandy, it was done a few years after Sandy, but that's kind of list everything, they, they went through the whole town and kind of identified issues, but it's, when you've been here for a while, it's really nothing that would jump out at you, it's all kind of, I hate to say standard stuff, but standard stuff.
Okay, that's.
As, as far as the equipment, whatever, after Sandy, we really didn't know whether they had communication capability, we weren't looking for walking, talking, cell phone, because, so is that part of your assessment?
Yeah, yeah, there, there is, and, and obviously, this, with, you know, it's, it's, almost, you know, thirteen years ago now, the capabilities have changed, we have a lot of capabilities that are up at the county level that we can request and have brought down here, including mobile internet, that can be used by certain members, obviously council, and emergency departments, if, in the event that, you know, self towers go down, whatever, so there are definitely capabilities, and those are listed in the separate annex as well.
Excellent. Any other questions for Ryan?
I just, I was wondering, just, I think we have eighteen people on this OEM list, I'd like to keep them in a sort of operational sense, you know, we could schedule maybe a quarterly meeting.
Sure, absolutely.
To just say, what's up, what's going on, just for eighteen people, I think you'd get pretty close.
Yes, absolutely, no problem. You got that?
Cool, thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, you're good.
After the neighborhood, Chad has offered some ideas for council members, if you want, if KISS or what's an emergency, and they move on, right, if you can go to town, I would like to ask you some questions.
Yes, I've had that problem, you've come used to the neighboring town, Rumson, we were about to track him down, the Pointwell Police.
Somebody can say something.
Well, the Pointwell Police officers came by and said, talked to Rumson, in fact, it was the Rumson Police Chief, and still didn't find, but, so if you add a photo ID, that would help that right there.
Well, thanks, onto this, Joe, your next, with the tackle projects.
We have several ongoing projects that I'll review, the amended redevelopment agreement with the Denhold's properties is in regard to the Toll Brothers assuming responsibility for the single family and the, and the town home projects there, Denholds will be responsible for all site improvements, so we don't have to see who we have to go to if something's a problem, Denholds will assume all responsibility for that, the sewer, the sidewalks, all the public improvements, Toll Brothers will only be responsible to build the homes themselves, and Denholds will build the multifamily buildings. So Chris has been gathering paper from all of the professionals on both sides, it's, it's a voluminous stack of assignments and, and exhibits, but we will have to take action on that at our next meeting, correct?
Joe.
Ryan. I was just gonna say, I can say, but the documents are very thick, they're a lot.
Maybe we could put it in the conference room, somebody wants to come over and just buzz through it before the meeting.
Joe, I don't know if you could mention, where are they in the construction project?
They're, in their due diligence, getting their project done, they, they had to modify their CAFRA, they've done that, they applied for most of their demo permits and, and that'll be first, we've met with them about the, the hullier, the seawall, et cetera, and I think they've agreed with Greg on most of that, Dave Hutter's working with them as well, so I, I think they're just waiting on this agreement to be finalized so that they can really start in earnest the, the project, which will be demolition first.
When do you think that'll start?
I think that'll start as soon as we sign this.
Okay.
I think in the next thirty, sixty days.
Thanks.
They've been doing some remediation on the buildings, you know, their pesticides and things like that that they had to do for, you know, vermin control, et cetera, so, so they haven't really started that. The second one, Collier's proposal for the beach street viewing platform, they had done all the design, ready to go, the beach street, they told us that they would be ready within the next week or two, and, you know, as in anything, their proposal's going up, over time to do the, to do the rebidding and et cetera on the project. And the last thing I have, there's a lot of things going on, but I know we have a pretty robust agenda today, Greg and I were able to meet with the Department of Transportation last Thursday about the check valves along Ocean Avenue, Greg jumped in, it seemed like it was positive, we had the residents there that were repeatedly affected, he seemed to be positive about it, although there's always something else that comes up during the conversation.
Yeah, I think the DOT heard something to our proposed design, putting the pipe into the water, there's two pipe crigs, homeowner, I don't know if he's fully aware of what that's gonna look like, I'm gonna send him an email telling him to look at the one we put on Beachway, it's gonna be identical to that, DOT and I went up to Beachway, they looked at that, they said it's something they can do, so I think they were very positive to our first design change. The homeowner, I think, was, he was so solid, I mean, I think he was probably, he's trying to do things to move the pipe further up his property, which isn't possible because of the improvements that are just in the settlement, so I think once we come to that terms and we have the final design, I think we're gonna have to tell him this is our final design and our final option at DOT S, and it's gonna be kind of a take, it'll be a type of, hopefully they'll take it because it'll solve our flooding problem and everything.
And so this flooding problem, you know, it, it's frustrating to a certain extent that, you know, it's holding up the other, all the other check valves from even tide all the way, all the way north, the DOT, for some reason, wants to do them all at once, or they're not gonna do them.
What if the travel force, can we push them to do the others?
Yeah, what if they were to do the other two and just take that one off?
And take it off the.
Yeah.
So that's where we are with that, it was a positive meeting, I can say that, well, we've had positive meetings before, because they have to go back to design, they're designing people, so I guess we've been there before, where they go back to design and design says, no, we have to do it this way, but I'm not, I'm not hoping for that, I'm hoping for the best, so.
Assuming the homeowner accepts the terms, what's the reasonable guideline for these to prepare?
I would think they're probably gonna see sixty days before we can see the design on the DOT, because they have to go through the consultant, you know, they're gonna go through any of the DEP permit, we discussed that with them, but you're probably gonna have sixty days to get the design back to the homeowner, once we have that meeting, I think it's, you know, it's a one and done with the meeting, so that's imperative, by the time the DOT gets it, our schedule could be a full calendar year, depending on how we hit their budget, you know, because they're gonna have to schedule this within a budget, and this is holding up the renovation of Ocean Avenue, so they're, they're fully aware of that, so they're trying to get that in before that has to be done, it'll be paid, so that's, that's all coming down along, but I think probably within a year, with my guess.
There's been so much attention on this particular, I just held up all the other ones, I just want to make sure that we don't go, whoops, there's another one that all of a sudden sets us back, we need to get this one cleared.
Yeah, that's probably a good point, because one of the things we haven't checked is if any of those properties, the other two are on being sold recently, because those property owners were agreeing with those checkouts, so we're gonna have to go back to the last couple years to see if those properties have been sold.
I mean, it sounds like best case, we're at least a year away, but we don't want it to happen, if we get this one cleared and trip up on another one, three years away.
The good news is, they, they do possess the, the checkouts.
Thousand.
They, they've purchased them, so they're sitting in some yard somewhere in New Jersey, so that's usually a long lead time to get those, so at least that was a year ago they had.
And Greg, is it fair to say, I mean, I know we're working with downtown area, but we have had a lot of flooding on Ocean Avenue over the last high tides, right, and I believe in the northern and south beaches predominantly reverse through the check valves, not as much over fall case, is it fair to say, in your opinion, when these checkout valves get done, except for the highest of tides or storms, north and south of Ocean Avenue should be somewhat protected?
Kind of the highest of high tides, but high tides, it's gonna knock out, you know, your beading, but your highest of highs coming through, we have a couple situations specifically in the north, where there's a couple bulkheads that were just repaired, you have to pass the check valve and then you do, so the bulkhead is there, if we get more enforcement on the, the two or three bulkheads that need to be repaired, I think one of them has been suspended, that, that will help, and yes, I think the medium high tides will be perfect.
Okay, that's a big deal for us.
Yes.
Are they still coming in place? There's that conversation in Barbara's property?
They were there.
Yeah.
Last week.
So basically, we're gonna clean that one, right?
We couldn't get the area, I went and looked at it in the harbor again, they cleaned out that whole beach, because the whole beach was covered, and now the pipe was dead, viewable, and they told them that they were gonna extend that pipe there to the river, so that was another.
Same one?
As you said, one, just to clarify, if there's still a problem with this one property, then to present this now, what you said, the DOT says, all right, that one is fault of this, and we'll proceed with all the others to this one project.
I didn't say.
We hope, we. They didn't specifically say that, but they kind of were, and us too, we're kind of saying this is the final shot at six twenty, because we're kind of, we're trying to solve the design problem and solve the homeowner's problem, so this is kind of the final design, if he doesn't take it, I think they will willingly walk away from it, they already said they're gonna walk away from it, but they did bring up the other two pipe check valves, when we had that with last Thursday, and they're, those are still on the schedule of it.
Any ability to push for the, what do you call it, the vacuum, or flush out?
Yes.
There's a couple that.
Before they do these check valves improve, they just get it lined up, and then once we put the check valves on the brinner side, then you won't, you won't see them anymore.
But as you gave away.
Yes.
And, and the one we were talking about, the Nadler one, they're not putting a check valve on that, they're just, they just cleaned it out, that's not necessarily the greatest thing.
Yeah, but I looked at it with Charlie, and that, that's not the one that really hurts us, because the water runs to the north, and we'll get to the one that we're fixing, no matter what.
Okay.
So it's not gonna pond there, so to speak. Another nature.
Thanks, Drew, anybody else have any questions on this one? We're great. Joe, any else on your?
I'm sure.
All right, on to public safety and public works.
Good morning, everybody. Most of stuff I'll say will be an executive session, I just have five minutes of executive session, so some stuff I want to talk about is already on the list here, including the e-bike ordinance, parking, which we'll talk about when the e-bike comes up and parking comes up, everything is normal, our road department did a good job yesterday, guys, you were happy the whole time, so they did it, I don't have much for you, except for executive session, that was it, I'm gonna make it short and sweet, I know we spoke to Erwin, we've talked to Jack about a couple things, I'll leave it at that, the one thing that Ryan Merk, who does all the OEM stuff, you guys asked what your roles are, the most important thing, I think, which I would say is, we had words like that, bringing us resources that we could not get, we were kind of left on an island out here, and we have all the stuff that we can do, but we, we were left with basically nothing, and I felt as though that our government needed to call people in, that we just couldn't get, because they kind of left us out here, whether it's our government officials, even higher than that, that's where we had the biggest problem, is actually calling people and giving the resources that we just go into other places, not getting to sit here for, for two weeks, and.
Yeah, use your contacts.
That was it, just use your contacts and make a decision, because we were good until we basically had to open up Seabright to the public, and once Seabright got opened to the public, it became a disaster, that was really my experience, every resource you have, call them in and tell them to help us, because we, everyone says we're gonna help each other, we had to help.
It would be good for us to know what those priorities would be, so that we can get on.
So that's gonna be dependent on, obviously.
Of course.
You know, and the needs, you know, when, when we see the capabilities for these farm fire department works, that's when I need you to get on the phone with your, your friend politician on a higher level, and be like, hey, we're in a bad spot here, what can you do for us, you know? There's also a level of continuity of government, too, you know, those that work here in Sandy, there was a lot of, all right, are we making left or right, are we doing this, are we doing that, and those are decisions that you guys need to make on the floor, again, it's in specific, though, we don't know what those decisions we made, so.
Yeah, but there's some really good points here, I mean, you know, Brian and the mayor said, and I think we all agree, the most important thing we have to do is make a decision, so progress can get made, but the first responders know what they lack, we don't necessarily know that.
Yes.
And it would be great for us to understand, what we needed was, we needed generators, we needed communication, we needed water, we needed backup police, whatever it is, would be good, and maybe, maybe Ryan or anyone knows that, but that way, we almost have, I mean, it depends on the emergency, a playlist, it's.
Correct, and we all have that for you, when you can deal with, and I still, to this day, if this was not a state highway, and that bridge was not brand new, we'd still be sitting under a pile of sand right now, that's the only thing that kept us afloat was, this was a state highway, and that, and that bridge was brand new, that's the only reason why we got anything down here, is because this was a state highway, if this wasn't a state highway, we'd still be buried in sand right now.
Yeah, the reality is, I mean, Brian, you probably test this, Jack will test this, we have to stay out of your guys' way, and, and, and they're not gonna know what to do until the emergency hits, and what it is their needs are, and then they come to us, and then we get on what they need, and that's the way it's gonna work, so it's hard to plan in advance too much, because we don't know.
We didn't know, we don't know.
Right, no, no, we don't, and you never know, because you're not expecting Sandy to hit, so, so it's, but you guys are not shy, when you need something, they come to us, it's like, hey, we need this, that's right, we're not shy.
That's all I got, actually, five minutes of executive session, and I'll be good.
Keep working.
Hey.
Good morning. I guess, since we got canceled in January, you, you will review 2023 really quick, just got a lot for our number, I'm gonna post a number, 2023, 659 calls for service, I say, okay, 659, I say that every workshop meeting, this isn't the old Seabright Indian fishing village that I grew up in, definitely a new town, I like it personally, but, yeah, the, the needs for the farm keep increasing, 659 was our total number.
What was that from your last year?
Probably seventy-five, please, no, not percentage.
Seventy-five calls, please.
Yeah, probably, um, no, I don't, I didn't, I didn't run 2023, I should, shame on me. Response time's still sub five minutes, four minutes, and ten seconds from when you call 911, so the fire truck pulls up at your door, I contribute that to the, the dedication of, as I call them, the children downstairs.
Chad, how many of those just accurately asked, we actually didn't see right.
I was waiting for that question.
I knew you were.
It's the, it's the document.
Be the one.
Sweet. 2023, we received a 78 times, we gave a 233 times, most of that's probably to Mount Beach, actually, I can tell you exactly how much it's given, 107, that was in Mount Beach, and 347 calls were handled by ourselves.
And how many were Seabright, did you say?
We received a 78.
Seventy-eight, okay.
Joe?
And we divided 233.
Two, three, 234.
That doesn't add up.
I'm like, put your regional man.
That doesn't add up, that's like 50, no, no.
Seven.
Plus 347.
Oh, plus 347, okay, sorry.
Yeah, those are the ones that we handled ourselves.
Got it.
In Seabright.
In Seabright. So proceeding forward, 2024 year to date, we have a fire, there are bumps on this line, so we're at 73 calls to date, comparison this time last year, we were at 39, something that's exacerbating that was the flooding event we had in January, that gave us, I think, 20 something calls that day.
The fire, rocks the rock?
Yeah. Wait, I see it.
I'm gonna press that.
The one thing that I didn't cover was man hours, 2023, 43,703 individual man hours, that's divided into 1,694 man hours of individual call responses, a bunch of other stuff, stuff, 6,800 training hours.
Yeah. Three calls per staff.
Just keep going, keep it up. It's not me, it's kids.
It's easy, right?
It's easy for them.
Thank you.
All they have to do is be there. One thing, 2023, and I know Jack asked me that every other day, is we did that ISO inspection.
Sure.
ISO, the insurance underwriting. We're currently sitting at class three, we're trying to get us down to class two. If that happens, there will be, I don't wanna call it significant, but a notable decrease in your, your mortgage insurance, mainly from more of the mortgage side, which closes up, but you will see a decrease if I get that.
Okay.
And then I'll.
Once I get that level of.
Thank you, Matt. Danny, you wanna speak today, or are we on spot?
Dave?
Yeah.
Last year, we did about 345 calls last day. To date, January, we did 14 calls over in Seabright. We missed zero calls. We're working with our medical director to schedule training for our members and anyone else who wants to come. Our blood draw date is May 14, 1pm, at the Rexan. Looked like the blood draw we had last year.
Is that all day?
Excuse me?
All day?
No, one to seven.
He said May 14?
May 14, yes. We have the louvers we got last year, which is the CPR machine. Anybody who wants to see how this stuff works, feel free to stop over there. We can set it up and show you. We have electric stretchers now, we're going, they're all alone for the ambulance, the ambulance is, so we updated all that. And the fire department's been a big help. They show up at almost every single call that we have, provides manpower, and we're short, like a driver or something, you know, the driver will hop on and bring the ambulance and drive it for us. So that's basically it. Any questions?
Any questions?
Dan, I know that recently, that county has instituted a, for lack of a better term, an ambulance program through the sheriff's office.
Yes.
Do we know about that? Do we, are we involved with that?
Not really, I mean.
I mean, I know it's brand new.
They're spreading out throughout the county right now, but mostly, I think, in the tent falls, calls in that area.
So the county sheriff's department created an ambulance service to supplement local?
Well, some of the towns, they can't get out, they totally shut down, they volunteers, and the county stepped up and they're providing for us.
It's all made along, it looked very nice, and I think some of them. Have we had any discussions about what their future status, whether we can guys for company?
From the articles, I gave you the article, it says that they're gonna try to expand to the entire Long Island as a backup to local volunteers, so.
I think they were operating on four low.
They look at these contracts, and they're gonna be supplementing eventually, when if you don't get out at a certain time, within a certain amount of minutes, they're gonna send an ambulance in.
Well, that's interesting.
And they feel, they say they have stock going and heart going, but everybody gets available, it's submitted to your insurance, which people at Seabright aren't used to.
Right.
So, and other towns are not used to it either. We've had no real discussions with them, because, you know, they're gonna decide where they wanna go.
I mean, to me, it seems like our unit's team has really elevated, it's come a long way, and we appreciate that. But understanding the complementary nature of how these things can operate, definitely.
Oh, yeah, no.
Good enough.
What we're looking for, what we're gonna approach us as they grow.
It's a, it's a brand new program, so we'll monitor it, and I'm sure that these guys will be on top of it.
I mean, if you want them to come in, I'm sure the people have. That's a decision we'll make.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan. Great job, all of us.
Sheriff is playing a major role, this is, it's gonna be a very slow expansion. They have to buy the amateurs. On a couple of the occasions they have, were negotiating to take over, they consider that what they're aiming to do, and they don't just want, I know they're just gonna be out of control, but they are now seemingly focused on specific location where they can keep the events and doors and the crew can relax or whatever between calls.
They recognize it on a county basis, that a lot of the volunteers need some backup.
Sure.
So it's a step in the right direction.
Dave, Director of Home Works, thanks for coming in.
Okay. So anyway, between January 10th and yesterday, of our experience, seven northeast storm events, some stronger than others, but they've all required some form of cleanup, whether it was debris or snow. So that's a pretty lot. In fact, it canceled your last meeting, if I remember correctly. Okay, Rob ordered a new tractor for the beach rig, that'll be here in June, and also a new dump truck for the department will be here in June. In addition to that, Joe S. has to start putting up a snow fence in most of the North Beach section of town, which we picked up the fence, put most of it in. We have a little bit left, but we're off to do.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's mostly done now, so it's quite a bit of fence. Frank Warren's asked me if I could pick up the dune grass plantings next week, you there?
Yes.
Because they wanna plant some dune grass. And last but not least, we have a full-time employee who's gonna retire, Randy Allen, at the end of the month and about two weeks, so he'll be down in a night.
He'll be missed.
He's been here for about ten and a half years.
Yep.
Yeah, he did a lot, yeah, he will be missed.
Yeah. Is there open jobs there?
We talked about that, didn't we, John?
The hire we did last year was ahead, so we should.
Got it. Pretty sure I was in the plan, right? Okay.
Dave, are you gonna continue the snow fences South Beach?
Yeah, if you want it, as long as the money's available, we can do that.
Rob looked at it and said, you know, let's come as far south as we can now, before the bird thing cuts us down, and South we can do during the season, because there's no birds for both sides.
It's not a protected area.
Right.
For majority of the.
Yeah, there is one section in the south that goes.
Yeah, yeah, but this is protected, so we have to get it up.
Yeah.
So it's between the seawall and the west end of the dunes, that's where we're putting it up, so.
Dave, thank you for getting that North Beach up.
Oh, yeah.
It looks good. I have created a map with Frank for the entire North Beach, just to check off the bird thing you guys completed.
Yeah.
And I have areas in the Angerage, Main Beach, and South that we'll wanna do the entire stretch, so.
Sure.
I know it's a big burden, we get the whole crew up there, working on that and taking care of other things, so I didn't expect, like, you guys just to only do this, but we do appreciate it. But if they weren't able to get to these areas, I was gonna suggest we contract it out before we get a price from outside contractor, if they weren't able to get all areas, because I think it's important not only to do the north, but do the south, get everything fixed up.
We still got some time, as long as we have the availability with money, we should be able to do a lot of it anyway.
Right.
I think.
Right, Rob, it's up to.
Is there a time you wanna touch on, Sam?
Well, just to avoid the environmental issues, I mean, if there was no time, I just wanted to get.
I think that's done. I think that Angerage and the Main Beach aren't, there's no encumbrances on there.
Right.
No. And even really South Beach to a service, as John said.
But you'd want that to bind the planting, do planting?
Yeah, get up as much as, I wanna add some additional sand trap areas that we're gonna talk about.
Yeah.
But the more that we get up repaired, because it's like, you saw how it was, it's on the ground, I mean, the storms were pretty bad, and they knocked a lot of it off, too. I don't know, you know, there's no fixes, as long as we stay on top of, like, the plant, like, just checking on it, fixing it as it falls. Yeah, they're fixing some areas where they can, you know, but they had to, they had to replace. Unfortunately, some of it was so buried, couldn't even move it, you know, so they just put it right in front of it, so.
The other issue we have, especially in the north end, are people cutting the fence to make their, they believe that they're rammed down.
Oh, yeah.
We had a whole, that contributes a lot.
That was like, every person that would walk away believes that they have a path to the beach.
They don't wanna work around, so they just cut through, and so that's another problem.
They just break our fence and spread it.
Is there something we should do about that?
Once we enforce.
They've sent us out there, you know, and we've replaced it multiple times in different
areas over the years, and they don't care, they'll just come right back out.
Is it like you go out and you cite the homeowner who has the walkway across the way and say, why, you know, give us?
Stop.
I mean, I know you don't do that, but, 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 we have to do it.
Yeah.
Right, we have a currently. But that's not, we can't tolerate that.
Is there, like, a letter we need to send out, saying the fencing is in place, and?
And if you touch it, we're gonna shoot.
Seriously?
There is a plan that I've got, just the ones that are legit.
Yes, we do have.
Or we're gonna do a town mail or we're gonna do that.
Yeah.
We're gonna piggyback, I'm gonna just speak to you after we talk to Chris.
Yeah, we have to do that.
Yeah, I'm a little smart. I mean, to me, what we should do is, we should put out a letter to all of the property owners that have a thing across the street, and basically say, here are the 10 access points, or whatever they are, we're putting up dune fencing to protect you and the entire town. If you do anything, you will be cited for it. So let them know what's gonna happen, and then if it happens, unfortunately, we're gonna have to do something about it. We have to, but we can't just let it go unchecked.
They have to be plugged.
We've spoken to homeowners that cut the fence, we have done it before in the past. You know, people that want to know, go, like, can I go down from my house? And people think that, not sure if those steps go down, they can go right there that way. But I think that if you do send a letter, everybody more, each was, isn't that a letter?
No, it's not.
Yeah, she had it, that would be something that would be good for us.
Yeah.
Great. All right, that's it.
It could be a postcard about preservation. You could do two, you could do the letter, and then you could also do a.
Secret of marketing.
I think a letter about having the dune grass, and also like a quick thing, maybe about, I know it sounds funny, private blowers, because people, new residents don't understand the whole coastal protection plan, or what it means, and maybe just something quick like that, because they just, not that they don't care, they just don't know.
Excuse me, if I can refresh everybody's memory, John will confirm this, following Sandy, we sent out several notifications to homeowners, particularly in North Beach, about going over the dunes and cutting the snow fence, and, you know, it has to be enforced. One thing I would suggest is that get the New Jersey Fish and Wildlife folks involved, because folks are also, not just going over the dunes, which is our issue in Seabright, but they're also invading the restricted areas that mark up for the dunes. And they will come out, and they will find people. They have folks that, I don't know if they're actually, actually officers, but they look, they have uniforms.
Yeah.
And they're intimidating, and they will come over and knock on somebody's who are getting fish. And, yeah, they are, they're official. So I would urge you to get those folks engaged as well, just tell them, look, people are violating your fence line.
Hey, Arthur, if you open the door, if you can say your name and address for.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Irish Shustine, 730 Ocean Avenue.
Thank you.
In beautiful North Beach.
And Dave, again, I totally understand why it wasn't done yesterday, you guys had a lot of things on your agenda, but if the South Beach sidewalk along the seawalk can get done today, it's still, it's still covered. So, I mean, I didn't go in the North Beach, I don't know what it looks like.
No, we already, we already hit that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure it's done, because it's gonna be like an icy mess otherwise.
Do you think that you're asking if you can handle finishing the whole rest of the beach without, or any other things you have to do?
Well, we gotta do the beach lockers, too, but I don't know, we got enough time for that, I don't think.
We do.
Yeah.
We're gonna do.
Excuse me, good, one quick question. Dave?
Yeah.
Problem for you. Do you guys really release the beach following the winter? Because all sorts of crap floats up on there, and there's giant, giant timbers out there. Do you get rid of those? Do you leave them?
No, we try to get rid of them.
We do.
The problem is, we can't get up there, right, because of that gully right there?
Right now, yes. We're trying to get out there, and we can with the smaller vehicles, the load is a little bit harder to get around.
Dave, you might get some equipment to use on this stuff.
We've seen it.
Some of them gotta be changed, so.
We will be picking up everything up before.
Yeah, but you don't wanna chase up, you some crews of.
No. No. We have a plan show on the floor, it'll be out there, we'll pick it up.
Yeah, I would suggest like, once a month, at least, to.
Right.
Especially after the storm, right? Like, you guys have done a amazing job with the first flooding.
We were around there the other day.
People coming through was awesome, really awesome.
I had to hire somebody contracted out, because this time of year, Highlands, they winterized their equipment, and that's it.
Yeah. I think that's, like, before the storm, you need the sweep, the timber sweep.
That'd be great, yeah. Yeah, what we do, we pick up the large debris, and then I wanna wait a day or two so it dries out, because if you put the sweeper out that next day, it just ain't gonna clean it up the right way, you know what I mean? So that's how.
If the concept of a letter to the property owners in North Beach was accepted, who has the need to do that?
We have to.
We've done it before, I mean, we have videos, remember last year, we had a video of the guy just pulling out the plovers and just throwing them.
That's horrible.
The people who have taken the dune sign that indicates, if you want the dune, you get mine, you pick them up and just throw them. So Wild West in Seabright.
Thanks, Dave. Anybody else have any questions for Dave or public work, civil?
Anybody?
Dave, thank you. Thanks for. All right, next one, easy one, Joe, just that we need to hire somebody to do, is one application.
Yes, Affordable Housing Alliance is no longer doing it for us, and we needed to go out and find another, another affordable housing monitoring service. Jen B. from Vakian's office gave me a company's name. It's an acronym.
CGPH.
Yes. We got it from Jen. They're all over the place, they're very, you know, they're very into it. As you can see, our contract with Affordable Housing Alliance has been $10,000 a year. Theirs is not to exceed $10,000. And basically, they say that it should be a lot less, because we don't have that much, so it's even a cost savings.
I got friends. Amazing.
All right, I think the next one was, Mark, did you put this one on the land board?
Yeah, that's where, so basically, when we did our master plan a couple years back,[1633.72]
Alright, I think the next one is, Mark, can you put this on the land board?
Yeah, that's where, so basically, when we did our master plan a couple of years back in 2017, we never updated the ordinance since we beat up with the master plan, which is required to do by law. So I asked Jen B., who's amazing, uh to put together a proposal and she kept it pretty close, far from the term. But it is something we need to do, so. And it's in there. And Joe, I didn't know it was in here. I asked.
The curses.
Yeah, no, what I was gonna ask is, I asked him to ask him to put it out to the budget for 2024. Is that something we have now available? Or do we need to wait for it to budget?
Well, we'll talk to Mike on Friday. Uh I don't, I don't know. We did, a few years ago, we did do it.
We didn't do any updated ordinances. No, not, 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 not to make a map of the master plan. We did an update. I know we never did. It wasn't done. That's why you still have to do it.
Yes, please.
Oh, no, I missed what you were saying. We approved something to have it done, but we never actually did it work. I'm telling you it was done. I mean, we approved it, but we never, we never, show me where we adopted the ordinance since the master plan or not, or not. It's not easy to, and that's why Jen had to go ahead and put the uh ordinance together. We, his side team had to deal with it, so it never did work.
So you speak, you speak the best on that?
Yes. Um Mark already did. He wrote it.
Yeah, I told him to put it in. He agreed. So Chris, you might wanna check to see if we actually have it.
What?
Paid out in that ordinance. Because I know we signed the contract here 100% right. They just never produced the uh the actual ordinances. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
There was an ordinance 10, 2018 that was um law ordinance. They did a lot of sections of the land.
Well, show me, just show me. And because that's, we don't need to be duplicating, but I know there's other things that haven't been done. So.
No, thank you. Uh Lizzie says, quote, for court, send over, we're on this nice interview with the set to get the Oceanport current plan. Do you want to speak to this?
There was a problem that when we started some forest parking, uh now, I can't remember, none of any hundreds of tickets. Going through the Oceanport Court created a problem, but they have since brought in a second person to help with their cowl. And things have improved. So on the basis of that, we'll be deciding to stay. Just for your information, check other towns. I didn't notice, but Mountain Beach, their court is in Falls. They don't have no court. So they have even a greater distance to travel than we do. At Rumsen, problem there is they already have a fair hay holding their court in Rumsen. So we have just one court facility and using many purposes of it. So based on that and the ability to stay with um Oceanport, they have a nice facility. And that we have multiple staff, Oceanport better in the monitor this year in Seonco. But uh it's uh it's about, I'm timed, it's about 15 minute ride for the police to go back and forth. And if you went with a neighboring town such as Highlands, that would be not a problem. But we're just monitoring Seonco this year. But the staff over there is very, very unengaging, first of all, we want. In making these changes, you have to coordinate with the judge to make sure she doesn't have a conflict because she has multiple court days. But right now, Oceanport was good. And the rest stays the same.
Nice. So we have a few reasons out there on housing for the summer. This is parking. We're pretty strapped. More so than ever this year. We're gonna have some issues there. So keep your eyes out. Yeah, Heather, you've been.
We're talking with the local property owner.
We just need to find a way potentially to move 12 boat trailers. It's kind of, I'm not sure. Maybe I should talk to Lance to see if he has some space or aisle.
There's an area.
Oh, you need to move them off of property.
Correct.
Do we have multiple people we're talking about as potential, you said, property?
Not really. Only one at this point. Um.
I mean, I don't know if it's right to talk about.
We don't even talk about it.
Yeah, I'm not involved in that. Obviously, there's multiple pieces of property to be considered. Not being involved in it, my assumption is we've approached several of them and went down to one. Is that?
We've approached others. We approached the church uh in Rumsen. Uh they, they have not been interested in, in, in us parking over there. And really, just the, the one marina that we've talked to.
We'll still keep talking. That was the most recent um just concern about what to do with those trailers. But that would create enough space directly for the volume needed and given cases.
Kind of these, are these trailers that they may have moved back because it was, or are these trailers that they're getting rid of?
I don't think they're getting rid of them. They're, they're, they're residents' trailers.
So we have to find another place to locate them because residents are still using them.
I don't know what the usage is.
Okay.
From what I see, because I live.
Because they've been there for how many years?
They've been there and they have to move.
They haven't moved, right?
And then we could also.
See any other thing?
Yeah.
And put them up in the floor.
Tempur pots.
He has a space that he said we could use.
I'd like to come with it. Solutions to make it easier.
He retired.
Who, I mean, who's got, who's got the grip on this? Which council member working this?
Well, Heather's really the one that's spearheading the dialogue with the marine owner.
I was just saying, one that I had contact with, but.
The only reason I ask, right, there's multiple ways to skin this cat. None of them good. We're not building a parking garage in the next three months. Right? That's not gonna happen. So while I had vote enforcement, I spent quite a bit of time talking to Brett and Jim and others about this, right? And we contemplated various ways to solve this problem. I don't want to belabor it here, but we may have to find a different solution in renting somebody's property if we can't get somebody's property. And I just wanna know who's got the ball to kind of figure, because it's gonna be honest, really quick once paid parking comes. They're not gonna have a place to go.
No. I mean, that's why it continues to be on the agenda.
Everyone is, he knew where that, that's the problem. It's just a, yeah, one, this is probably not gonna work, but I share with Joe, I just made, went to the city this weekend with Jen. You know, parking garage is obviously not, now, I'm kidding, we can talk about that, but now we can obviously, everybody's just, it's interesting, there are like the one-story hydraulic pipes. I mean, they're pretty, they're, it might be the only option. And all the, you know, going vertical. It was interesting there, you know, you need the attendant and everything. I have no idea what the costs are, corrosion, all that. Well, yeah, that's looking miserable, honestly. Um and it's seasonal, but some, so you know, it's just, we're, for a town with fewer options.
Yeah.
It's an option. I suppose anyway, something could research. I don't, I personally think it would work, but if it worked, I think looking at it's an option.
Yeah, what I'm getting at is driving through a recommendation with the council committee will approve. When I had ordinance enforcement last year, parking was in my area, and I felt this was an area to investigate to try to find a solution. The only thing I'm concerned about is that somebody's got a grip on it. They're gonna bring to council a workable recommendation for the science. Who is that?
I'll, I'll.
I, I mean, I was only approaching one because I had contact, but I'm happy to.
That's a, that's a pretty good one. I mean, it's viable.
It is pretty good. I'm not giving up on that because if, whether it's this, doesn't hit this year or next year, it's a viable solution.
Yeah, so if you're gonna continue to.
So I think it's parallel hacking, right? Did we talk to, did you talk to the Rumsen chief place for the church?
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about the church, but um there are two ideas that we do have for parking. It's. I'm gonna go ahead and order my business parking passes, assuming we're gonna find a solution. We have two ideas. One might work, the one you're talking about. Another one that, I'm not crazy about that idea, but it might work. It's just, every, all the stars have to apply on that one. There's another one that I'm thinking about. Um we also have to assume that we're not gonna have both parking lots that we're thinking about now. If we can get together with Denhold and see when they think they're gonna break down the church street lot, if we can squeeze one month out of it, two months out of it, maybe it's a possibility. And also, I think we have to come with the realization that we might not even have any business parking lot. And we have, someone has to say, you know what, business parking people, you're on your own on this one. Um other towns do not provide business parking lots for the businesses. We're even fortunate enough to do it. And someone has to say, you're on your own. It's not gonna be a solution, but it's, you wanna park there, you got to pay it. So that's kind of what we're at right now. I know some of the businesses I'm gonna approach and some people, I will approach and ask them about it. But I need, I can't do it without obviously the council's approval and tell them what I'm doing. But I do have some ideas that might work. But I'm assuming that it's not gonna work and someone's gonna have to say, whoever you have a business, say, you guys charge the Rumses here. But we're not there yet. I'm just going to order the business passes. And I did order 150 of them last year. Obviously, we, you know, they, they all sold out.
And when you order those, there's no annotation of cost. Because if we decide to take it from $75 to $350, just making this up, that's not tight. Have you had these things previously?
No, 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 no.
Because just to be very brief, Frank, when we talked about this, assuming we didn't get anybody's property as a subject to do this. What we were conceptualizing is we take, again, this is only during paid parking season. For most of the months, it doesn't apply. But during paid parking, you take a small subset of the parking in town, pick it, 50 spots. And if you want one of those spots, it's first come, first served, and it's $250, it's $500. Because we make about $1,250 per parking spot per year, if you look at the average utilization. So we wouldn't wanna give it to $75 and lose $1,200 worth of revenue for the town. But if they have to pay $1,200, that's ridiculous. So assuming nobody was willing to give up a piece of property to do this, the worst case scenario for the workers are you paying $2 now, whatever the going rate is, and that's what you have to do. The best case solution is we decided to come up with a subcenter spots, first come, first served, and they would gain a faded rate because they worked it down. You do have to get that to a decision point. So to me, this is a multi-prime approach to ultimately decide on what proceed.
Absolutely. Yeah. And we're gonna go ahead and as business as usual, and order those passes and get this thing going because it's gonna come up on a square.
And we've talked about, we really don't even, if, if we come up with nothing, the employees will be paying for parking, and that's gonna be taking away from our businesses.
That'll take away twice. It'll take away parking and it'll take away beach sales.
Beach sales.
You just get the revenue from the parking.
You'll get the revenue from the parking, but not any revenue from the beaches.
Agreed.
And, and the businesses, you know, they're gonna be down 100 spots.
Yeah, that's always the intangibles of what you lose by losing parking space. Sure. Yeah, we're on the same page.
Yep, and Heather will work with you on this.
Yeah.
But keep in mind, as Brett said, like, we're one of the oldest towns that provides that parking for businesses.
No, well, we don't have.
I mean, I don't think Red Bank. Parking for the businesses.
But they have a ton of parking.
Well, that's debatable. If you ask people in Red Bank, they're gonna say they never declined parking in Red Bank, so.
Well, I mean, they do have parking rights.
I understand.
You know, we've talked about that more, and you're, you're, you're correct that nobody thinks they have enough parking. But, you know, if you go to Belmar or Asbury, you may have to walk 10 blocks, but there's parking space. There's no 10 blocks in Seabright. So, I mean, that, that's a little bit of a difference. Anyway.
We wanted to assign parking spaces on public, on usable lot. There are spaces at the far end of the lot that I don't use on a regular basis. A very good Saturday, yes, but other times the parking lot will be 75, 80% full. But these far end spaces, that might be where we would want to assign business parking.
Well, maybe that's a, it's a math equation for captain areas where we can figure out how many paid parking spaces do we have? And then how many unused spaces do we see on an average outside of the weekend? I think that's what we know. Exactly. The number that'll help us, right? It's, it's math. It's how many available spaces on the cap on an average, the other basis, weekday and then weekend. I would do weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Say Monday, any weekend.
Yeah, I think right now, Brett does order the passes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna order everything as normal and see where.
Sounds good. Alright, next is a pretty easy one. Sign over minutes. Talk about your, essentially, every couple of years, you have to.
Yeah, we do. Salary ranges for all the, all the positions. It doesn't give anybody an increase. It's just a salary ordinance that uh is a range for each of our uh positions here in, in the borough. So Chris has been working on that.
Hey, Joe, as Chair of Personnel, can I just take a look at that before we finalize?
I think it was in the pass.
Is it? Yeah, okay, thanks.
Alright, next up, please. Heather, you wanna take this one away?
Alright. Okay, this has been a long awaited, it just hasn't happened from random years. But so we had a bunch of submissions and they were great and they were varied in looks and approaches. And there was one that was just like a universal setup. Absolutely. Everyone on the rec community was blown away. This is an artist, his name is Jay Alders. He's phenomenal. He's down more in the, in the southern area of Jersey. He does a lot of just beach shape surfing outside. So I have, um, it got kind of pixelated. I told them only to blow it up as high as it would crack properly. But this is essentially what the mural would look like. You can also see it non-peoplehooded on my broken phone. Yeah, scratch. Don't mind all the time. So this is, this is a view. So this isn't taxpayer dollars, right? This is from the beneficiary funds that you have. Um and you thought this would be a pretty amazing rendering to put on the south-facing wall of the rec center. So ideally, it would kind of start with spring and it just brings kind of vibrancy. Something's going on in the community center. There's a lot of action that's happening now. You know, we've got the farmer's market in there, the pickleball's in there, you've got the open gym coming around. We really want to make this a place for the community to propagate. Um and it just brings just kind of energy into the town.
So, so I'll be honest, I don't like it. I'm not really a big mural person, I guess. It's not that tight. And I kind of like the way the building looks now. I'm just being completely honest. I could be completely in my minority. I just wanna say that. I like the way it looks now.
What's the cost of it?
$2,000.
We just said the benefit, what's the benefit?
Well, technically, it's a faster hazard. It's.
Yeah, it was the Sandy Recovery Fund. People made donations to it.
Heather, go off.
I mean, does everybody else block them?
No, I think the community center looks great because it's just fresh paint, right? Um then just, but I do like that, but I don't know if you need that $15,000 or something else. I give you my view. First of all, thanks for the work that you put into this. I know it's been a long hard coming. I absolutely love it. I think we all do. What we have at the other end of town, coming to town, it's bright and gets your attention with the beachy. I like this. If, if you were going around the room right now and you're saying yes or no, I would say yes. It is a bit striking. It, it's very bold. But you saw all the other ones. I saw none of them. If it was a yes or no vote, I would say yes. I wouldn't say yes.
Jack, you have a thoughts?
You have what the others were?
I, I do. I mean, there's a ton of them. This one seems to be the most on Seabright brand.
Jack wants a little brain roll.
And I'm happy to bring Jay in to, so there are some, here, maybe if you don't. Just a little up and down in there. Yeah. It's more, there's like a water phase one, and there was, yeah, you saw the one, the, there was a, animals involved, fishes involved.
There's one with dogs or?
There's, there's, no, there's one with dogs involved, where you put your own dog on. And we reached out to a, a very spectrum of artists, Tara Hamonchenko, she took the lead on that. She's got connections with artists and anyone who wanted to submit, submit. We got a home resident who submitted, um, Emil. So there was a spectrum to choose from. And I think if you think it's too loud, but you like the concept, you can easily, you know, talk to Jay and slightly, you know, modify it. But this is definitely his style. If you see his work, it is identifiable.
Thanks for sharing the other pictures. Now that I've seen them, I like that one even better.
Right.
John, just out of curiosity, what's your opinion? You've put a lot of work into this.
Well, I originally wanted them to work.
Yeah.
And we said no. And that was free. I hope someone was gonna do it for you.
Well, that we're paying for, that makes sense.
Yeah, right. I think it's cool. It, it doesn't fix anyone's home, so it's not offending uh anybody directly.
I'm not really happy. Are we gonna get a sign put up facing Ocean Avenue for the building? Or is it, that's what, that's what I think we need most, obviously, is just like a nice, you know, Seabright.
I have the old sign, but they need attention.
How's that?
From somebody that can really.
Identify the building.
Take care of it. We do have other things we need in that building. Um I don't know where that one comes from. Let's see, I've said, we have other money.
Well, I think also when you look at the, the funds, they can't be used for certain things, right? So.
Get it used for a new sign?
Probably.
Yeah.
That'd be nice. So I'm sorry, what are these funds again? Are they?
It was a Sandy donation fund that we had.
It's a donation fund and is it restricted?
Well, it's, it's restricted up to a point. It has to be for the rehabilitation of Seabright.
But it's sitting in, in an account, but it's not taxpayer?
Correct.
It's not Seabright?
And we're, we're doing a grant, right?
We're doing a grant. We need a resolution for that.
That's what we suggested.
Yeah, it's on the bottom.
And that will attend to the wall, so.
Right, it's the preservation grant. So sitting with Frank Lawrence, we're pulling funds for looking at the east-facing wall to make sure that that can be reevaluated. We're gonna look at the bathrooms and getting the bathrooms with some compliant toilet seats and sinks, because that's the bathroom from the original 1918 building. We're looking at the front doors to.
Well, the building is not from like me.
Pardon?
The building's from like 1960 something.
Is it?
Yeah.
I thought it was.
The property was dedicated in the name of 1970.
Okay. The building was moved.
Building was moved to Seabright Village.
Right. Uh so that, that grant is due February 27th. So we've got funds for rehabilitation.
Then the locks are gonna be important, the more it gets used.
I do, like, do you want to go back and like work on a side, maybe new signage on the west side of the building?
He wants a sign.
Then it'd be nice to have a sign.
Of course it would. And that would, you know, so is it a no on the mural and a yes on the sign, it sounds like?
I think so. No, I think it's.
You do both. I'm not a huge fan of.
Let's see, have a grant. We don't know what getting them.
I just don't know what direction it goes. I'm hearing is the sign.
It sounds like the signs are more important than the mural. That's what I'm hearing.
But I could do two, but then I got signs for $200. But the murals.
No, that's kind of the thing. You're not gonna know if we see it if we do build this. If we do have it painted, like, you won't know if it was done. Then you're gonna go, yeah, it's either really nice or bloody.
It's gonna work. That would be nice.
Two, two, two points. One, there's a useful life on the mural. It's gonna deteriorate over time.
That's true.
And then letting you do it there. Second, I was really surprised at the choice of color for that building. It's not beachy at all. If you would take it and make some bright colors that you can do over time, maybe that's more inviting than, those are the colors that McDonald's is using in all the buildings, the very stoic, very cold. So I'm surprised at just the colors that we use on this building. Maybe that would be an approach.
They are.
Maybe make it a little beachier.
You may also want to put that out to the public and get some public input on it before we just go ahead and we in this room approve it. Because this is something the entire town's gonna be looking at.
I'm happy to open it up if that's what people want.
That's my suggestion. But Mayor, we have, we had Jack and I in a block earlier on on a different subject about cutting, cutting off the general meeting at 10 o'clock, because I know people have to leave at 11. And we have, we have a long executive session, and there's no point having an executive session if people aren't here. So I don't know if we want to adjourn this, going to executive, if we finish executive.
Oh, I know what you're gonna do, 9 o'clock.
Yeah.
Can we just do one last item, the e-bike ordinance?
Sure.
Skip to that. I know that's important. We're almost there.
It's all important, I guess.
Well, yes, of course. The e-bike ordinance is ready to go.
Trevor.
I made two suggestions. I don't know if they were changed. I didn't see it changed from the last one.
What were they?
They were the, there's a definition section, and I don't have it in front of me, but it defines a certain four letters. And then the bulk of the ordinance talks about something else. It doesn't talk about what's in the definition. So I thought maybe that was a mistake because if you're regulating something and it's not in the definition, it doesn't exist. And then I had a second question, because there's one that regulates, but only for people who are over age 14. And I was wondering the reason for that. Why, why would, it's about riding the e-bikes in certain places. And it's only for people over age 14. I wondered why it wouldn't be regulated for people under. And maybe there's a reason for that. Maybe it's the state law won't let people ride who's under 14, but I didn't know the reason for that.
I just made all the both points. So the definition has different in the text compared to the front of the half definitions. I took state definitions from those three vehicles and put it into the definitions portion. Walt did not. Walt had a loan term. I just didn't correct all that. So I think that the definition on the front page is the actual state definition for these vehicles. That should be used in the entirety. And the 14 was just something that was in Walt's. It's fully up to mayor council if they want to keep that age limit in there.
Okay, so.
That wasn't our idea. That was just what was.
Thanks, Mayor. Couple of quick things. I work this close to the road enforcement. We got it to a point. Good questions. I didn't understand the, up to age 14, because it basically implied that if you're under 14, you can ride this on a sidewalk. Basically the way it reads, which is I don't think what we want to do. The big contentious point that we have was use on the splash pad, right? Because it's a high risk up there with people going to cast something. The way it's written right now would convince use on splash pads. And Mark is just, okay, with you, you're a code enforcement.
No, no, that's, you were to discuss this.
I was very happy to bring this to final closure, that we're all comfortable with. We'll correct the things that we just spoke about. To me, the most important thing is we have council conviction around the main tenants. Do we want to work this? The answer was yes. Do we see a problem going on? Yes. The most important thing about this is it creates an ordinance to put the police department in a position that they now actually have the authority to use on. Because it's documented. Right now, they have no authority unless somebody's committing a crime. So the thing I would say, please, not to take the time here, is if any of the council members have any strong issues about e-bike ordinance, which is in our pack, please let me know. I will finalize those with Jim. We'll clean up whatever mistakes we have, and then we'll be done.
But I think we're all agreed that we want to get rid of the age.
I agree. I personally.
Yes. I don't see any reason to block it.
No, no, no. The splash pad is the point.
Yeah, we want the splash pad included, that you can't go over the splash pad.
But to Mark's point, when you read it, it basically says, if you're under 14, you can ride on the sidewalk. The law doesn't apply to it. We're gonna take that out. So if everybody's okay with that, please take a look at it, right? If you have any issues with it, send me, you know, I'll finalize with Jim, and we'll be ready to go.
It's a splash pad, Arthur, especially. I mean, has that been finalized?
No, that's what I think is, I've heard different things from different people.
That could do its role, well, right now again, go nuts.
I mean, that's.
Some people want it on the splash pad?
Well, they don't want to push, they don't want to push the kids out over 36.
The first thing we discussed was, you know, our, our feeling was, we didn't want to, like, the judge said, push people over 36. We wanted to regulate the use on the splash pad, take the speed or take to, you have to pedal it. Because most of these bikes have the ability to be powered through the motor or for you to pedal. And it's, you know, that's, that's kind of the direction we were going, as we were talking about.
So we would be able to regulate the speed, as in like you can tell if somebody's over 20 on splash?
No, we would put some signage up and stuff like that. We couldn't sit out the trailer and see how fast someone's going. And we also can't force people. We can't tell, maybe a kid, we can't go, hey, I'm probably 36. It's just not happening. You're gonna have mom's splash pad and all that, I mean.
And it's risky, I would. It would run any great options.
Yeah.
This side is something that might have power.
So what? Hang on, hang on, hang on. We're, we're not gonna post a police officer on the splash pad all the time to monitor this. In my opinion, Heather, work is our major concern is for the safety of our residents. That if walking with the children with their dogs and an electric bike sneaks up on citizen, and we say, how did that happen? The problem is, if we take the bikes off the splash pad and we put them on the street in the North Beach, the feeling is there's a high risk of somebody's immediate injury.
Right?
And there's no room.
There's no room. So what we tried to do is come up with a compromise that basically says, put regulations and stipulations how they can be used on the splash pad. And that's what this ordinance intended to do. There's no easy answer. On the street is dangerous, on the splash pad has risks. We wanted to control what's best as we could. So, I mean, there's no perfect answer here to your point, right? The question is, what's the best of the bad answers? And I think that's what the jury's looking to get. Sorry, Eric.
No problem. What will a e-bike rider be confronted with when they enter the splash pad? Let's say they're coming over the bridge.
Appropriate signage.
Exactly. What, what specific?
Well, we're not gonna settle that right here, right, man.
Well, you get a rough idea. I'm trying, I'm trying, I don't know. I haven't seen, you know, I haven't seen the ordinance. I haven't seen the ordinance, so I really don't know. But it seems, yeah, it seems a little bit of middle and.
What's the order of time, which we have not done yet, and approved it, we will put the right signage to reflect the requirement stated in the ordinance.
I just don't want to adopt the ordinance that they're not gonna force.
I agree completely.
And that's, that's my theory. If we just put a signage.
I will, or.
And we do have to get the executive session. We're killing them right now. I would say you submit some more to any.
I'm happy to take.
I have no problem seeing Mr. Rowan. He worked on it and stupid for.
And everyone, because there was stuff.
I'll work with you, Martin.
It sounds like we're undecided whether it's gonna be splash pad or, I mean, I can take a splash pad as one of the sets too. Is it able to paint a strip down the splash pad as like, as an area, as like that's, that's out? I know we went through this.
Probably not that big.
Especially when you get.
How wide is it? Just like that, 80?
Yeah, but when you get to all the stairs.
All the stairs.
Oh, no, no, I'm not. Okay, not.
Make a bigger splash pad.
I guess.